Evening, everyone, and welcome to this month's board meeting. At this time, could I have a roll call, please?
Jay Akerman.
E. Flynn.
Here.
T. Drells. B. Jealousen.
Here.
Arlo Yonkono.
Here.
H. Randall.
Here.
Kay Van Bergen Pito.
You have a quorum, so please, Jay Akerman, I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. First item is the consent agenda, one motion for the approval of the minutes from May 19th, 2025, and approval of the manifest. So moved.
No second name?
By Ben, second by Evelyn. Any questions, comments?
I just want to make a comment. I mean, I'm fine with all of it. I just noticed going through, it occurred to me while going through the manifest, how much of the money that we spend goes back into the local community? I think it's just worth noting, you know, as like going through the list, florist, paving, they just go down the list. And it's, it just struck me today looking through it that it's, you know, and I know we consciously do that, but it's worth noting. Just happy to, happy to see that we do that.
Yeah.
Police force.
Yes, yes, they are part of the local economy, too.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Next, we come to the public comment period. So if anybody would like to speak during the public comment period, we ask that you please come forward up to the table so that the microphone can pick up what you have to say and be heard by the folks at home. And with that, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. There are none at this time. The public comment period will remain open for 30 minutes as required by law. If you do have something you would like to say during that time, please raise your hand and we'll stop what we're doing and you'll be recognized. Thank you. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, I want to welcome some new hires since our main meeting. At Lancaster Elementary, we have Joene Ball, who's a part-time cook, Caitlin Desolates, who's a paraprofessional, and Leah Silk, who's going to be a grade four teacher. At Whitefield, Cheryl Edmwood is going to be Title I, Amanda Vettiness is going to be Title I, and Brian Oberdi, a music teacher. And at the high school, we have Caleb Murphy, who's going to be doing the summer and preseason strength and conditioning. Brad Willie, varsity girls soccer. Connor Ludwig, cross-country running coach, Braxton Brown, golf coach, and Darwin Hilbert, custodian. Is that who's here? Was anybody here that I just said that to? No? A couple of things that we did this week that I think is kind of exciting. Today, our wellness facilitators with the Wellness Committee met with New Hampshire Hunger Solutions, and we have given a soft okay to start our school breakfast challenge, which we're gonna just start out maybe a couple of days a week to give this a go until we can get the structures in place where we're going to be promoting breakfast for all kids. And it's kind of like a bag-and-go kind of format where if kids come in or come in late, they can just grab a bag and bring it to their rooms. And the science behind that is saying that kids do better and end up purchasing more meals at school. So we'll have more to come. We just, we just want to start slow.
Okay.
And then yesterday, the behavioral health team and the nurses, and Chris was there, met with Carried Away New Hampshire Cavity Prevention Program. They're going to come to our next board meeting and explain their program to you. It's a little bit scientific, but we hope to sign on with them. It's a silver dimine fluoride treatment that they want to give kids. And what it does, it stops cavities in its tracks, in their tracks. It's not a cleaning program. It's something, they put sealants on kids' teeth so the cavities stop. And then they also apply another layer of something that I can't pronounce that puts like a white coating over it. Because once you put the silver fluoride on, the cavities turn black. So they like point out where the cavities are and then they cover them. But it's a very exciting program. So you're going to vote on that next time after they explain it to you. And then policy information. We're going to have a lot of policies coming your way as soon as we dig into these. The first ones are going to be all around the 306s, which are all education base, which is going to be very good. So this evening, you're going to be hearing from the district leadership team as they formally present a recommendation for your vote to move forward with planning and transitioning of grades seven and eight to the White Mountains Regional High School beginning 2026-2027 school year. The team is going to outline key elements that would be needed to address, that need, that will need to be addressed during the 25-26 school year, which would serve as a dedicated planning year. The focus of that year would be ensuring a thoughtful student-centered approach to this transition, one that prioritizes educational quality and operational readiness. At the core of this proposal is a clear and urgent commitment to our students. Due to steadily declining enrollment in grades seven through 12, we are rapidly approaching a point where we would no longer be able to offer the range of programs and experiences our students both need and deserve. By bringing middle school students onto the White Mountain Regional High School campus, we can maintain our academic offerings, increase access to enrichment opportunities, and better prepare all students for the future. We recognize that there will be financial implications to any major change. However, we believe the first and most critical step is to design the right academic and structural plan. Once that framework is in place, a full cost analysis will be developed and shared transparently through the fiscal year '27 budget process. And we have the district leadership team here. If you'd like to come up and we can have that discussion. So the principals can all come up together, that are, that plan on speaking, please.
Marion, while they're coming up, what do we still have open for positions?
We have a couple of teaching positions in Whitefield. Cheryl, exactly which ones are they?
We have, we're looking for grade three, grade six, seven, eight, middle school ELA, and three paraprofessional positions.
I think that Scott is just about all set. Do you have a pair of positions?
We have a couple of parapositions and two special educated positions that we're still working on.
Math and English nine.
And Mike, we have some social worker candidates.
From Friday? Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll start off just discussing the impact of declining enrollment and what that will, could potentially look like for us here at the high school and is already looking like at less and less. And so in order to maintain those robust programs that Marion mentioned, by bringing up seven and eight, we can integrate seven and eight and offer them some of the programs that we already offer and have teachers for. And so that will increase the offerings for seven, eight, and allow us to maintain those offerings for high school students as well. And the process, we're hoping, well, we are going to collaborate because my expertise is not middle school, and bringing stakeholders to work on that, what those academics will look like.
At the pre-K six level, we need to take a look at our current programming, especially with the alignment towards improving math and literacy proficiency. We need to make sure that our focus is on that. So if this transition were to happen, we have to look at staffing patterns and the models that we have to make sure that that continues. We're seeing great, great growth, and that has to continue if this transition happens. So that's some of the work that we need to do in the pre-K through six.
I just want to speak to middle school opportunities at this point in time. Our middle school students once had a number of additional opportunities to their academic program than they do now. And over the course of many years, middle school students have lost tech ed, family consumer science, health, library, computer class. And at one time, we had a dedicated reading class. We had a dedicated writing class, and that is now combined. So we've kind of cut their ELA offering in half. We were fortunate enough a few years ago to be able to bring seventh and eighth grade students up to experience some CTE classes, which has gone over so well. And our kids can't wait to get to the high school to, to take those opportunities further. But even that, in the last couple of years, it went from seventh and eighth graders coming up to now it's just eighth graders, and they only come up for half a year. So over the last 15 years or so, our middle school kids have lost a lot. And we talk about the struggle that we have with student engagement and feeling like a lot of that engagement, we've taken a lot of the opportunities away that had kids coming, wanting to come to school. Right now, their offerings are the four core classes, math, science, ELA, and social studies, and a unified arts. But those other classes and the co-curriculars that went with them have gone by the wayside.
So you guys have heard from the academic staffing design side, another factor that has to be studied and then a plan needs to be developed is around the facilities and the operations. And basically, where physically can we put some eighth grade in a building like this? You know, provide them an adequate education in compliance with what Marion alluded to, the new ED 306s. So we need to evaluate them, especially the facilities and operations ones, to ensure we have classrooms set up, that we have student-teacher ratios that are proper. And then reevaluating on how we are leveraging our buildings at the elementary school if a seventh, eighth grade transition happened. You know, some of the discussion that we've had, and we don't know for sure until we really dig in, is, you know, will this building need access to that white building? And if they do, then we need to relocate central office. And arguably, we could go into one of the elementaries. But again, that has to be, you know, looked at closely. And we actually have to start thinking about physically, where is a seventh grade math class going to be for this period? Where is an eighth grade science class going to be for this period? And still meet the ED 306s and provide them an adequate education. So that is one area that we need to look at. The other piece is the administrative team. You know, if we are pulling kids out of an elementary school, you know, the question is, does there have to be two full-time administrators? Or does it look like one of the administrators has a multipurpose job? And we don't know that until we dig in, look at the ED 306s again because they provide some guidelines on what your administrative structure needs to look like and so forth. So a lot of work to be done around that, especially with the new 306s.
And I've been in touch with NESDEC and had a conversation with a gentleman there yesterday and described this project to him. And he seemed very intrigued by it. They have never done like a coaching project where they would come and work with us and identify areas to be studied and give us schedules and timelines, et cetera. And he's going to get back to me about their availability to work with us. One thing I didn't hear is what happens to the high school and the middle school if the transition does not happen?
Yeah. So I'll address the high school. With the declining enrollment, we will likely have to reduce our staffing because we won't need as many teachers for fewer students. And so we would look at reducing staffing and not only core content, but we would also lose some of our electives and other offerings in our building. And so that's what we would be facing there if we don't have the opportunity to have middle school students in our building.
If we could take a second, we had, as a gentleman who like make public comment, please come up, state, state your name, town, and.
Where do I stand?
Anywhere at this table.
We're good.
Just, so the microphone and the camera.
I'm trying closer.
You're beaming lights to YouTube, so.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Gene Beland. I live on North Road in Lancaster, New Hampshire. And I'm actually here concerned about moving our seventh and eighth graders up to the, from the elementary school to the high school. And I'd like to present a bunch of compelling reasons based on like educational research, developmental psychology, and a real-world case study as to why this transition might be going in the wrong direction. First off, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, early adolescents ages 12 to 14, they're in a unique developmental phase marked by rapid cognitive, emotional, and social changes. Grouping them with older high school students places them in an environment that is not often matched, it is often mismatched for their developmental stage. There's another study published in the Journal of Early Adolescents down in 2016, and that found that seventh and eighth graders placed in high school settings experienced significantly higher levels of anxiety, depression, and behavioral referrals compared to their peers in a middle school setting similar to ours. And these are directly correlated with poor academic achievement. Another study from the Rand Corporation that followed students who actually did transition to our high school settings, and they noticed a drop in GPA during ninth grade and beyond, decreased participation in extracurricular activities, and a higher dropout rate by 12th grade. Conversely, districts that maintained a K through eight system like we have reported improved academic continuity, a smoother emotional transition to high school, and a stronger relationship with staff. I just think a lot of the studies show that K through A middle school models prove more successful than a high school, a seventh and eighth grader going up to a high school setting. Education Week's 2021 report highlighted that schools maintaining a model similar to ours, or a six through eight model, but a model similar to ours, had higher standardized test scores in math and reading. It had better social, emotional health outcomes. And not to mention that this system, K through eight, allows seventh and eighth graders an opportunity for some potential leadership development situations. And then there's an actual real-world lesson from this. In Portland, Oregon, in 2013, a middle school had to transition their seventh and eighth graders up to the high school setting. Within the first year, they had an increased rate by 38% of disciplinary incidents. Within two years, that district brought their seventh and eighth graders back to the middle school due to parental backlash and just poor academic achievement. And then the final thing that's probably the most concerning for me is we're actually going to be putting 12- and 13-year-old boys and girls in hallways, bathrooms, cafeteria. They're going to be sharing this space with 17, 18-year-old juniors, okay? This creates a risk socially and emotionally, but potentially in terms of like behaviors that are inappropriate, right? There's a study from the CDC that consistently shows that peer influence in these unstructured settings are a major driver for early exposure to drugs and alcohol and risky behaviors like that. I mean, just for example, I brought my son up for his freshman orientation. There were three meetings that night. The first meeting was how to be a Spartan. The second meeting was the freshman orientation. And the agenda for the third meeting was Narcan, the chemical used to help people die from overdose. Now, I don't know what's going on, but I feel like that's a scenario where our seventh and eighth graders don't need to be a part of. So I'm urging the board to maybe consider what are truly needed for our students, right? Instead of pushing our seventh and eighth graders up to the high school, research consistently shows that this actually harms them both academically and socially. So one final thing. In the past, I used to design electronic components for big systems. I even did project management. The last thing you want to do is you don't want to develop your system and develop the specifications for your system at the exact same time. That's just a path for failure. So what I am requesting is that the school board wait to approve this until we have a truly detailed plan on how we're actually going to keep our seventh and eighth graders completely separated as much as we possibly can, and the actual cost of all this. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Towards the, could you give us an estimate or the number of seventh and eighth graders that are already coming up for classes? As well as we, in this district, if I'm correct, all of our students are riding on one bus that come from the other towns, right? They, they're stopping at the elementary school and then they're stopping at the high school. So even the first graders are mixed with high school kids on the buses, right? Am I correct?
Yes.
So as far as numbers, any idea?
Bob, do you have numbers for CTE kids?
In the glory days, we were running anywhere from 100 to 110 up here from the CTE when we were able, we leveraged SIR funds to pay for two buses, one for each building every day. We had anywhere from 100 to 120 kids here. Then they would hop on regular buses here and go home or stay for athletic events, or their parents would pick them up here. Because we've had to reduce transportation, just SIR money went away, default budgets, we only ran one bus, and it did Lancaster for two quarters and Whitefield for two quarters, and you're looking at 30 to 40 kids, eighth grade, so.
Anybody questions?
Was a point of question, Bob, about was there any issues with the kids here commingling? Is that the point?
Yeah, I mean, just to say that it's, it's not something new for a lot of the kids. I mean, it's been common practice for a few years now.
I know, I mean, my, my two boys have graduated in the last couple of years, but I still remember, you know, moving here new and looking at putting our youngest into kindergarten and first grade in Lancaster. And, you know, one of our concerns was our shy, you know, quiet kindergartner, George, you know, walking down the hallways with the seventh and eighth graders, who seemed like giants compared to, you know, him at the time. So I get it about the seventh and eighth graders mingling, but the flip side of that, too, is I think the younger parents probably also have, you know, their qualms about their kindergartners, first graders mingling with 12, 13-year-olds in the halls, so.
What I wonder about the studies that were just read, and I thank you for doing that kind of research, is one of the incentives for doing this is our declining enrollment. And that's what's driving this, and less opportunities for kids. And I'm wondering if those schools that you've cited had that issue of the declining enrollment? Yeah, so.
So yes, Portland, Oregon, that case study had declining enrollment. That's why they did shift that.
Thank you.
Gene, would, would Steph be able to get a copy of what you quoted just for the school board record?
I can get you a copy.
And the gentleman?
Back again, sorry. I did, Adam Adair, 20 Brook Road. I created some folders. I've got some on analog presentation, nothing fancy, but. I think just enough, there's three here. Maybe one from the team over here? I'll just get one more here with you.
Oh, I thought she.
Oh, sorry. I'll share with her. So once I get the email.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, once I got the email a couple of weeks ago, just like Gene, you know, doing the research and having a lot of concerns, the kids at home, I've got a fourth grader, newly minted fourth grader, newly minted seventh grader, and a 23-year-old that graduated from White Mountains Regional. They wanted, they saw me doing all the work and some research here, and they wanted to put forth their little, the fourth grader says, "I want to stay in Lancaster Elementary School forever. Sincerely, Adam Adair." We know that's not feasible, but nice job, Mr. Holmes, for creating the environment. My boy Blake, sorry, he's, he's my emotional boy. He's got a great heart. He's got the Friendship Ambassador Award, I think, for three years in a row. Just a really good kid. He says, "The teachers at Lancaster Elementary School are caring, helpful, and the best. And I'm not ready to say goodbye yet." L.E.S. Rocks, Blake Adair. So very cool. Thanks again, Scott. So a little icebreaker. Oh, my 23-year-old, when I told her on the phone, she's in Michigan, working in her field after graduating college, she says, "Forwards." Wait, what? Why? No! So that's a 23-year-old when she got that news. So anyway, so good evening. I'd like to, well, first, before I start with the prepared remarks, so my biggest regret here is I didn't get involved in this process sooner. You know, looking at the website and, you know, the, all the open source information, it looks like this has been kind of brewing since, I think, 2019-ish, right? So looking back, you know, a lot of us parents that were working, you know, full-time, I was, at the time, at then, I was working in Concord, you know, driving two hours down, driving two hours back. So there's a lot of people that have a hard time getting involved. So sorry for not waiting until the 11th hour to come and say, hey, you know, please don't, right? I'd like to thank the school board first for our. I'd like to thank the school board first for all you do. There's a lot of us that observe your work from afar via meeting minutes and YouTube videos. I'd offer that the normal lack of residents attending meetings in person doesn't necessarily show a lack of interest, but rather points to a sign of trust and confidence in how you're carrying out the people's business. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm here to speak in opposition to the administrative proposal to transition the seventh and eighth grades to the high school. When I received the email from the district last month, a month ago now, I was confused at first. The first line of the email was, we want to take a moment to update you on planning around the seventh and eighth grade transition to White Mountains Regional High School. My first thought was, I didn't realize we decided to do this already. I mean, the email made it sound like it was a done deal, like, hey, let's come talk about the transition that's already happened. My second thought was, is this in the best interests of all our children? Knowing that there are some seventh and eighth graders, you know, worried about the problems, but, you know, looking at that, you know, from a whole child perspective. And my third thought was, didn't we have a survey about this? Something in my mind was like, I thought I did a survey, but and weren't the results generally negative? But what were the results of this survey? So I needed some answers. So I started doing research and a few things quickly became apparent. And this is where I have you to refer to the first handout where there's some research there. Parent handout. First, if money wasn't a concern, the best educational model for the middle school age group is to have their own facility. That's what the research points to, right? Not me, but it doesn't seem feasible here. The second best model is, well, the one we currently have. The least popular model is the one the administration has proposed we move to. From what I found, this proposed seven to twelve grade model is used mostly in rural settings like this one out of necessity and to save money, which makes sense, right? I mean, the tax rate's high, we're trying to save money. I get it. I'm all for exploring ways to save money, but the email from the district said that this isn't what the proposal is about. They say it's about declining enrollment, depth and variety of programs, and workforce preparation. So I navigated to the S A U thirty-six website in search of some more publicly available information, and I found in November, this is when I found out, it was a twenty nineteen initiative. I found a twenty nineteen document labeled Blueprint Seventh and Eighth Grade Notes. And that's, I put a little sticky for the second, hopefully it can help guide you through, again, analog, but yeah, it's there. I've highlighted some items for your attention. It appears this proposal for the transition has been a long time in the making. I'm not sure we have any more answers now than we had in nineteen when Mr. Cronin was asking, if you go all the way to the end of that document, Mike Cronin was asking some pointed question. To what extent will the middle school and high school students have contact? When? Where? How? What social, emotional, personal supports might needed to be added to the middle school unit? How would the middle school unit be structured, scheduled? And how many staff would it require? How will the staff be assigned from the existing two middle school units? How would we reassign the staff that do not move to the high school? Or will this require some attrition? Are we getting rid of positions? Like, you know, the point here is let's be open and honest, like, what are we doing here? Finally, Mr. Cronin ends with a profound statement. I am less concerned with curriculum and instruction issues within the context of this conversation as we are picking up our work with the competencies. And those questions will be addressed regardless of where the middle school is. So it sounds like at that time in twenty nineteen, you were too concerned about the curriculum, which which this seems to be pointed towards, you know, losing the curriculum. So maybe that was a snapshot in time and it wasn't a concern then. I'm not sure. Just looking at the documents, right? The next document I found was a May eleventh, twenty-three from the seventh and eighth grade transition to the high school advisory committee. Refer to the third handout. I think that one's in blue, if I remember right. Been looking at this for two weeks. It's all jumbled. I highlight a few items there as well. It appears the transition committee's plan in the spring of twenty-three was to wait for the projected decline in enrollment and then press forward with the transition plan. The committee is clear in the memo about the results from the surveys and research and initially planned to hold public forums to share the findings. I don't remember the public forums. And then it says, due to the space issues and increase in costs, they decided to bring their recommendations directly to the board. So I'm not sure if we missed some forums there. Maybe I was working, maybe I missed the forums and they haven't. I found another recommendation to the board dated November twenty-one, twenty-three. In it, the committee recommended the board not proceed with a consolidation of programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as the community is not ready for the change. That's in the recommendations at the bottom from the committee. Community is not ready for the change. Again, negative survey results were mentioned, but the committee remained unconvinced and stated in the long term, the committee believes that the benefits of a centralized middle level program outweigh the challenges. Speaking of surveys, I found the aggregate data as well. Refer to the fifth and sixth handout. So I've got the aggregate data. It looks like the school used a super helpful chat G P T tool to analyze the results from the survey, right? Well, maybe they put it in after.
This was this was a long time ago.
Right, yeah. I've highlighted some items of interest that had multiple mentions in both surveys. Overall, the survey results were consistently negative towards the proposed transition from both the community and the high school students. Even the high school students, when I look at the first question, just referring to handout six, how much do you think the seventh and eighth grade students coming to the high school would impact your day? That the options for the answers were, I think it would have a negative impact on my day. I do not think it would impact my day, or I think it would have a positive impact on my day. So in twenty-three, the students, seventy-eight point five percent said, I think it would have a negative impact on my day. So even even the current high school students were against this. So it seems like, for the most part, the community is against it, the high school is against it. Most people are against it, okay? So in closing, not too long ago, there were people that were pushing for a multimillion dollar expansion of the CTE program and facilities. There was advisory committees again, recommendations. The proposals made it all the way to taxpayers for a vote on multiple occasions. If I remember right, first we were told we might not get the grant money to help out. This is a one time and we might not get it. Then it turned out it came on the ballot again the next year. We found there was grant money available again. Luckily, the community knew back then that the initiative didn't make sense for many reasons, including declining enrollment. This isn't about a small number of people who will never like the transition plan. I read some April twenty-three minutes, like a few months ago from a school board meeting, and a member had mentioned seeming like almost almost like, hey, you know, there'll be people that never like the plan. But this isn't a few people that will never like the plan, right? This is the majority, like here, the majority of the people don't want this, right? This is this is about the majority of people who think there hasn't been enough planning done to mitigate the concerns they've already expressed, right? If you look at handout five on the surveys, it's real easy to see what the top things in the community are. Age gap between seventh and eighth graders in high schools. I'm not I'm not trying to minimize that the age gap between a kindergartner and an eighth grader isn't there. That age gap definitely there, right? I'm more concerned about my thirteen year old girl with an eighteen year old man. I went to a high school in Grofton that had that interaction, right? I had classmates in seventh grade that were dating seniors. It was gross, right? And I know, like, the school isn't built to police that type of thing. I get, maybe that's a parenting thing, but if we can put some barriers or at least have a plan, like, what is a plan for separation? If this is something we have to do, my mind's not totally close to it, but let, okay. I don't claim to have all the answers, and I admit that declining enrollment is at the heart of many issues we continue to face. However, I think it will be, it would be irresponsible to make a decision tonight and then try to figure it out as we go in a year. It just doesn't seem like enough time. And I know you say, hey, not enough time. We've been working from twenty nineteen. Great. Well, where's the plan then? Like, if we've been working on this since twenty nineteen, like, where the heck is the actual plan to what we're doing here? Are we losing eighteen, how many teachers, right? There currently isn't enough information to make a fiscally and morally responsible decision. Let's not try to build the airplane while we're flying it, right? I'm just trying to give it up metaphors to let's make this make sense. I ask the board to vote no on the proposal to transition the seventh and eighth grade to the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your comments are truly appreciated and welcome. I just want to clarify maybe two points. One is although both CTE expansion programs didn't pass, the majority did vote to do it. Unfortunately, they didn't vote sixty-six percent. So we need a super majority, but the majority did vote to of residents.
Okay, can we can we agree? Good thing that didn't pass, right? Do we, like, right, declining, like, phew, we dodged a bullet there as taxpayers, right? I mean, your point is taken, but thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a copy of that?
Sure.
Do you have a copy? We have the whole thing. Joe just skipped. Oh, is this in?
I don't think that, is that?
Exactly.
No.
Oh, sorry.
Would you like us to continue with our presentation?
Kind of don't know this.
Well, I understand, but why do we have it?
Is it for unruly people?
Would you like us to continue with our presentation?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
All right.
I have another hand up over here. Thanks, Gail.
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay. I was reminded, and I should have stated at the beginning, there is a three minute rule. And I didn't want to cut anybody off because your point is well taken and well spoken.
Keep it under three.
Name and town, please.
Kendricks, Lancaster, excuse me, resident of Lancaster and teacher at Lancaster Elementary. So just kind of listening to both of you lovely gentlemen and everything that you had to say, awesome points, I had some thoughts coming up. So we talked about that age twelve through fourteen, really developmentally tricky phase. It's tough. And I just, I can't walk away tonight without stating the importance of our pre-K, pre-K, remember, not just K, six population and how they're affected by this twelve through fourteen year old developmentally tricky phase. We have, we've had a lot of issues with middle schoolers and their language. Our Gail and I, we teach fifth grade at Lancaster in our classrooms. Are in a hallway where we have a middle school transition that comes through. And it's it's a lot. And I'm just very thankful that, like, my son is in unifieds when this transition happens and he doesn't have to hear some of the things that are being said. So our administration does a fabulous job of helping when those when those issues happen. But but they're they're a reality. So I just, I can't say enough that, yes, that that's tricky. And it is concerning to think about maybe a thirteen year old girl with an eighteen year old boy. But I also have to believe that through this planning process, that's not going to, that's not going to be a common thing. I can't imagine an eighteen year old and a twelve year old taking the same math class and that they are going to be separated, unlike they are in our school now, and it's sometimes painful. And unfortunately, we still, we hear a lot of the gossip and the drama in the seventh and eighth grade world. And they're still, they're in completely different buildings. And our seventh and eighth graders right now are not in their CTE rotation. Well, no one is because it's summer, but in the spring they weren't. And there's there's still eighth graders that are dating high schoolers, like, not just freshmen. So it's still happening. Yes. I, my son is going to be in sixth grade, and he's been used to having me around since he came to Lancaster Elementary in kindergarten, is able to come to my room. You know, is very much a momma's boy and very sensitive. But he did the middle school Alpine team, like I'm trying to address two sides of the room here. He did the middle school Alpine team this winter as a fifth grader, a ten year old. And he came to the high school every day on the bus and did his workouts. And of course, the kiddos on the Alpine team are wonderful, wonderful group of kids and treated him very nicely. And, you know, he loved it. He really enjoyed coming here. And, you know, I also spoke to him about his thoughts on this transition. And he said it would be really cool to have something more than just walk tree. He's very stuck on walk tree, you know, wants some different opportunities. And not that we can take a ten year old's, you know, opinion to make this decision. But I found that compelling, yes. Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to make sure that we were noting the effect that that twelve through fourteen population is having on the three and four year old group, eleven year old population in our building. And, you know, I like the idea of waiting if it's possible. I mean, how long is it going to be before we start needing to lose programs and lose teachers? How much time do we have? Do we know? Is there any timeline? As we're, so we're talking about we're going to lose these programs because our enrollment is declining. So, you know, how much time do we have to develop this a little more carefully before saying we're starting it in two years?
I mean, others may have thoughts too, but I just wanted to point out, you know, the, you know, you have these classes that are like bubble classes, right? They're these big classes. The last of those is the rising seniors class this year. So once, once they've graduated, then, you know, our seven, our seven through twelve population, well, let's just take the high school, like nine to twelve. This coming year, we're looking at three hundred and twenty-one nine to twelve graders. The following year, two sixty-three. So it's a really significant drop. And then it is important, I think, to say that things level out at that point. Like, we've kind of ridden out this steady decline, but based on all the projections we see from now, it kind of stabilizes for a while. There's a lot of unknowns, you know, we can't predict how things like kind of the open enrollment idea might affect us positively or negatively, you know, we have to go with the data that we have in front of us and what we can use and what we can't. But next, next year is really, you know, the drop off the cliff. Yeah, it's a real, it's a real turning point. And even, you know, pointing out some of these surveys and the committee work that was done years ago. Thank you for, you know, for bringing that stuff back up to us. It always came back to, hey, let's not do this now, but twenty-six, twenty-seven is when we need to really look at that. So when we talk about what might happen, whether we do this or not, next year is really the inflection point. And the reason we're talking about this now and not in the spring is we need that time to plan. I mean, budget work starts in summer and all this has to be baked into the budget, so.
One, one kind of thing, Keith, my facility study done years, a few years back, showed that this high school was suited for a population of close to six hundred students, if I'm not correct. And we're down, already down, as Herb just said, down to three hundred. So before the administrators get back into their presentation, the thirty minute public time period is basically up, but I want to give anybody as one or two last comments to make before, because once we go back to the administrators, the public comment period will be over. So is there anybody that would like to say something now? No, thank you. And Mr. Holmes?
Up next is learning from others.
So talking point number three is learning from others, visiting Hampshire schools with a seven through twelve model. Adam, you're correct. Like twenty nineteen, the board, they, it was like the board level, we had discussions on that transition. And we've been talking about it since. We had a pretty detailed presentation on some of the specifics that have been brought up tonight. So we had a, we had a team visit a local high school who, because of budget reasons, they shifted in February. So their admin team and faculty were told in February of twenty nineteen that, hey, in September, you're getting six seventh and eighth graders in your school. And then we did, we did the little, we did the team visit in December of twenty nineteen. So we have detailed notes. We could go back. We have the notes and we would go back and ask, you know, from twenty nineteen to today. ask, you know, from 2019 to today, you know, what did you do to make, to go from A to Z? Because certainly talking to them now, it's certainly a different model than when they first got there. We're also going to visit other like model schools. So as we, as we look at this, you know, like Epping, for example, they're middle, they have our same like population, kind of that same academic co-curricular athletics. So Epping is a middle slash high school. Then you got Newmarket, which is a junior, senior, similar, kind of treat those, those seventh, eighth grade a little different, middle school versus junior high. And then Hockington. So, you know, we've got, we've got schools that are D3, D4, kind of like still, still carry slender a little bit. When you hear that 260, we're going to, and I know we got sports parents here, we're going to have to decide, are we going to be a fully D4 school? Are we going to be a hybrid? Because if we're 260, we can go D4. But that, so those are some of the discussions that, that we need to have also. So I will say like in system planning, like in a, I'll turn it over to Rob after a couple. So like top, talking point number four, like you know, planning like the day-to-day, we are going to like, we need to do more work on our bell schedule. What is, what is seventh, eighth, the master schedule look like for our seventh and eighth graders? You know, the, the big, and talking to some of these other high schools, when we, when we talked to them in 2019, the separation piece was big. The parent communication. So if the board decides that we move forward, we, we've got to like, we really have to make sure our, our, our parents are involved, they're updated, you, you see the plans and kind of where we're going as, as we move forward. But again, using that, that other, that other school, they had like three to four months and that's kind of, so I think 12, at least we have 12. I mean, so we've got, got a lot more time to get to the specifics. And then a couple of my notes hearing you folks is like building community. How do we do that? You know, you got Lancers, Pilots, you got to get them here so they feel like they're part, they're part of it. And then I'll turn it over to Rob. Like in regards to like, I know transportation may have been one.
Yeah, so with transportation, we would have to evaluate with our current transportation model, which already integrates students ages five through senior year. Buses are already running between the, the three schools, so we would need to work with a transportation company. It also coincides with the potential of a, a different transportation company because we'll be going out to, to bid for a new transportation contract. So ensuring that that co-mingling model on the bus continues to, to work or if we have to use something different.
Yeah, so for athletic wise, right now, we offer some sports for our fifth and sixth grade and then there's some, there are some of the eighth grade and then obviously the ninth through 12th grade at the high school level. So envisioning it kind of what we'd have to really like look into is, is there room up here at the high school for kids to be able to participate up here after school? But since we kind of are, some of our sports mingle, grade levels, fifth, sixth, you know, sixth, seventh and eighth, we have a wonderful facility down at Lancaster, still utilizing that. We utilize Whitefield for field hockey, so we will have to most likely still bus our kids out to our elementary schools for after-school extracurricular activities, i.e. sports. Some come up here, like for an example Kendra, you know, mentioned, our ski programs come up here, our wrestling programs come up here already to do some, their practices here. So, so I can see that at being a, the thing that's going to also be is like transportation, you know, how are we going to, right now, we do a sports bus that goes to almost every single school, but maybe it'd be something within like depending on the routes, if they can take regular buses down to the schools, things like that, we need to really look into, you know, and just to see how we transport them from here to maybe Whitefield and Lancaster.
I just want to say that it's not going to be brand-new planning. We've been planning for years, so it's not like, we're not starting with a blank slate. We've got lots of scenarios down, lots of who would be fine tuning.
If I could just add a piece from the, from the student services perspective, really looking at, at that middle school, high school, looking at it from that, that three-tier pyramid. And when I think about some of the challenges that our middle schoolers are facing these days, there's no doubt that they have access to a wider world and for good and, and sometimes for not so good. But the ability to bring our entire middle school population together and create a, a shared vision on that, that tier-one universal level that aligns with the high school and creates that more seamless transition, but also from that tier-two targeted, small-group additional intervention perspective. Right now, we're split in providing those, those students who need that little bit extra in terms of the social-emotional support between the two buildings. And we've got tremendous staff, whether it's special educators, whether it's school counselors, whether it's our social workers, who are addressing those needs across both buildings. But the ability to bring that entire middle school group together, to address some of those challenges in small groups, we are, right now, they may be only doing it individually, can I think bring some, some assistance to groups of students who are struggling with similar needs and also do it in a more efficient and effective way. So there are some benefits on the social-emotional as well as the student services perspective to bringing that middle school together and also creating that alignment between middle school and high school.
Any other questions?
I mean, I, so I would, I mean, a couple of things I'd like to point out. I mean, I, we definitely hear the concern about the mingling of the younger grades with the older grades. I think that's paramount in, in our, our planning. On the other hand, one of our, one of our, you know, hopeful outcomes from this is for those seventh and eighth graders to be able to partake in more opportunities, which is going to necessitate some interaction with, with those older grades, I would, I would imagine. So there's kind of a tension between those, I, I think. So that's something that we definitely have to be very, you know, aware of in our, in our planning and I'm sure that you have thoughts on, on how that will work as we begin planning the, the movements of the grades and the, the classes that will, will be available to them. But it's one of the things I'm excited about thinking about that, that, you know, seventh and eighth graders having those opportunities that they, they just don't, we just can't provide reasonably spread across two, two schools in a, in a rural district as we do now. And then the, I mean, the last thing I would say, I'm certainly not an educator and I would defer to you on this, but if, if we had an unlimited budget and the geography of our district was a whole lot smaller than it is right now, I would want to see us have a dedicated middle school. I mean, I, I think that's what everyone would want.
Absolutely, yeah.
But the reality is when we look at the, the area and the busing that would be involved, you know, one of the concerns that's always come up when we talked about shifting things around is, and I felt this is apparent, I wouldn't want my kindergarteners riding on the buses anymore than they have to right now, you know, the, the very youngest grades. And unfortunately, that would be the result if we did try to consolidate those into three different age schools. Again, all things being equal, I mean, that's what I'd love to see and I think that would be the most effective and the, the most positive outcome, but we, we just can't do it and I wish we could, but, but we can't.
I think there's two other points that I just, before we close, is that, you know, most of us up here are parents and so the concern for, you know, a 14-year-old and a high school senior, like I, we get that and in no way, shape or form would we ever think that we're just going to take seventh and eighth grade and just dump them into mainstream high school. That was never on the, you know, never a consideration. And secondly is, I think there's a vast difference between what our schools looked like pre-COVID and what they look like now. And I think that comes into play as far as, you know, behavior and supports that our kids need, but also just even the hiring process. The difficulty we have these days in filling positions is really tough. And that's not just education, but it makes it even harder when we're having to, to try to hire for two teams.
Well, I mean, if there's any other points anyone has else, that's a chance, but I know a lot of thought has gone into this and appreciate your time and the effort, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, are you?
Rob is going to now talk about some of the job script, just job descriptions.
Yep. So you've got a handful of job descriptions that's an action agenda item later. A couple of them are an amendment, a couple of them are actually technically new job descriptions, but what we've done is combined positions as part of the new CBA that goes into effect July 1. So the first one is Director of Buildings and Grounds, just updated the kind of what the position actually requires kind of moving forward. We did add some qualifications around ensuring that you're a certified school facility specialist and/or a certified school facility manager through NASBO, which is the New Hampshire, what is it, Melissa?
Association.
School Business Administrators. They have a facilities manager. It's a pretty intensive program to, to earn that. The second job description is titled maintenance. And before, we used to have outside maintenance or grounds maintenance and then we had facilities maintenance and there are different pay rates, but through the CBA process and negotiations, we worked with the, the union to combine them into one position so that they are responsible for both inside and outside maintenance. So logically, we'll call it maintenance, all right? And this job description is a combination of those other two without duplicating language. The next one is custodian. We had four or five levels when you count the lead custodian. In the previous CBA, five different levels of custodian. So again, working with the, the union through the CBA process, we now have a custodian, not, and a custodian assistant, not a level one, not a level two. We really need employees that can do all aspects of the job and not just some, which used to differentiate the levels. So that's what the custodian one is. And the last one I have to report to you on is the Dean of Students, CTE Director one. So again, as we move forward with utilizing staff and having dual roles as we have declining of enrollments and people need to be able to do multifaceted jobs, the CTE Director, Dean of Students, they, you know, when you look at the old Dean of Students, the old CTE Director, it's a combination of them. Any questions?
We'll have a few more next time.
Yeah, and we'll have a few more next time.
Just to clarify, there's still a lead custodian.
There's still a lead custodian job description, yes.
Okay. Any questions?
I just, there's two, the last, we have two at the end here, Rob. CTE, college and career pathway.
We're going to table those until next time.
There's a new agenda.
Yep.
I don't know about the agenda, I was just.
Yeah, we got it.
The other ones, we still need some work.
Yeah, we were kind of reviewing the packet today and we're like, oh, we found some mistakes. We'd rather not come back to you again with another amendment. So get them right the first time. Okay. And that's it for me.
Yes?
That's it for me.
Any other questions for the superintendent or assistant superintendent? Well, then moving along to Director of Finance.
A few things. We finished our federal monitoring and we had no findings this time around. Everybody's hard work pulling that together.
Great.
So that looked really good. There's budget adjustments, the small ones that are allowable through our policy, just a list of those that have happened through the end of the year. There won't be any more for this year because we'll be closing the books. We have just a reminder, I think we have a credit card balance that we're going to need to clear out year, year-end. So there's going to be a supplemental for that and then we'll have another much larger manifest as we, again, close out these expenses as they come in. And then the last thing is your bond balance report and that is our new number, $196,000 at this time. And we're still working on closing some invoicing and things of that nature.
Getting down, getting down to the end.
Yep. Case some people.
Any questions for Finance Director?
Do we have any big invoices outstanding at this time?
Usually our biggest things that come in at least right now are related to tuition, out-of-district tuition.
But they're on campus, so it's not a surprise.
Any other questions?
No, just good job to you and the staff about, on the federal side of things. I know that that can be a bear. So nice to, nice to have you come back and say everything went without a hitch. So nicely done.
And it's nice to have the monthly tally too as well. Thank you. So we move on to committee reports. Ed Programming.
Yeah, so we met last Wednesday and we spent the time getting a demo from the vendor of the Alma. What would you call it?
Student Information Systems.
Student Information System. So to replace Power School. And yeah, it was actually really instructive. It was, you know, again, I, I mentioned earlier, my, my, my two boys have graduated. I, you know, don't want to wish them back in school, but I wish they had had, wished, wished they had had that in place when I was, you know, trying to monitor grades and what they were doing, what they weren't doing. And what I really liked about it was that feeling of empowerment for parents and students. It, it's just a lot easier to get an overview of what your, your students, especially if you have multiple students in the district, what they're doing at any one point and what they have coming up, what they have due, how they've been doing. And then the other thing that I really liked about it was consistency. Some of the views, you know, sort of the, the meat of the system when you're looking at, you know, the snapshot of what the, the kids are working on, the competencies, because it's competency-based, that view is consistent for the, the student, for the parent, for the teacher, the administrator. You know, when you sit down at a parent-teacher conference and the teacher pulls this up, you're going to go, oh yeah, I know that because I was looking at it this morning, right? So yeah, to me, it, it seemed really good and sounds like we're going to move ahead with that, so.
And I, I'd like to give kudos to Jeremy. He's worked very hard over the year to get this going.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, have we signed the contract with them?
Getting close.
Yeah. Couple things here and there. Yeah, but it looks really impressive. I think it would be nice, once it's a done deal, you know, once, and, and we're, we're going to have like a year transition, right? So at some point during that year, it'd be nice to maybe bring it to the board and kind of present, just so we see it, you know, we can kind of publicly say, hey, this is what we're working towards. Get people excited about it.
Next is facilities.
Well, we met, we met them this morning and we, we were still discussing the pavilion, the outdoor pavilion, the outdoor learning pavilion, the projected outdoor pavilion. It's still ongoing. We have some things we have to investigate before we bring it in for a, a, a final course. And then one thing we're involved in reviewing was the building usage, people renting the auditorium, the cafeteria, you know, and it hasn't been reviewed in many years and there's a lot of things that needed to be changed or tuned, tuned up and some things weren't clear, some, some things, some laws or restrictions were put in or changed and so we're, we're working on that. The sewer pump at the high school, we're in caput. And unfortunately for us, it's a pretty expensive. And unfortunately for us, it's a pretty expensive proposition. It's gonna be $8,000 just for the pump, but you just have to have it. So these are what we call those emergency, yeah.
Last week of school, perfect time.
Facilities.
Then the first.
That's true. And actually, we're, we're wondering whether we pay for it this year or next year's budget.
Yeah.
Right.
We, Gary did some work today, was able, it's already on its way, it'll be here.
Oh, good.
Before next, or early next week, so, yeah. So it can happen within this fiscal year.
That's good.
Okay.
And then we're gonna be, we're gonna, it's on an action agenda for tonight to vote on the, the, the high school gym exhaust fans. We discussed it last time.
No, July, we're gonna vote on that.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Oh yeah, approval at July meeting, I'm sorry. So again, it was a matter of financing and getting bids and doing different, getting more information about it. And we have to have that too, though. And then we, there was an update on the summer maintenance program, what's going to be done during the summer, the painting, the floors, you know, the whole enchilada. Hopefully, we get the paving done.
Talk about that.
Up here, that would be a good thing. Get rid of the mud. And we're moving along.
Thank you very much. And next is Personnel Committee. Nothing new to report other than the administrative contracts are coming through my emails on a daily basis, the ones that we approved at last month's board meeting, and we have one contract to discuss later this evening. Policy. I guess we got all the information we need for policy from?
Yeah, we, we will have some more coming.
District Wellness, same thing. Okay. Unfinished business. Anybody have any old business they'd like to discuss? No?
No.
Okay. New business? Any new business? New business. I just wanted to say that I was invited to join a group of CHIP people from around 15 or 20 districts around the state to have, to request a meeting with the governor to discuss school funding. The request for that meeting went out last Friday to her office, and we haven't heard back. So.
I did have one question. We have this in our packet with the school board meeting dates. Is this just informational for now?
Yeah, this, we voted it already.
Oh, we did? Oh, okay.
At the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Did we table it?
Yes.
I thought we tabled it last week.
I don't remember voting, but maybe I just.
You were.
Ah, okay.
Or is that two times ago? I was pretty sure. Because there was something.
We, hold on.
Yeah, we did.
Did you vote on it last time? Okay, I just missed it then.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
It was, it was a meeting, I know you, I'm pretty sure you were.
I was going, yeah, okay, all right.
But does it need some change?
No, 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 just, it was in the packet and I didn't see it on the agenda.
And any other new business? None?
I just missed the start.
Number two.
Says table, doesn't it? On here.
At the next meeting, the next week.
Which would be this meeting?
Okay, I'll go back to that.
It was a tabled item?
I think it was, but she's gonna check.
Okay, all right.
On something, this or something else?
No, on the, on the.
On the calendar?
Calendar. I don't think we approved it.
Okay. So moving on to the action agenda.
Well, actually, if, if that was tabled, then our next meeting falls into the next year, the 17th.
Which is why I thought we already did it.
Yeah. So would we have to approve that tonight in order to have that being a valid meeting?
The draft minutes you guys approved tonight, page three, item note two. It says to approve the school board meeting dates for school year 2025, 2026. Moved by Kara, seconded by James Ackerman. Discussion been like the idea of budget work on the same evening following a regular board meeting in December. Reminded that we should not plan any DLT presentations at that meeting till out time. Motion carried unanimous.
Yeah, I think, I think we did table it, but then we addressed it.
Okay. This is tabled, so.
Sure, I will look into that.
Okay, all right.
I can't, I have breakfast.
Yeah.
Action Agenda Item Number One, to accept and appropriate unanticipated funds in the amount of $5,000 from the Keep Driving Foundation to the White Mountains Regional School District. Funds are to be used to focus on increasing access to mental health and support students across our region and create a community where students feel valued and connected by offering alternative education opportunities. Also, to accept and appropriate unanticipated funds in the amount of $6,155, which was raised by the Lancaster Elementary School's sixth graders. These funds will be used towards an end-of-year field trip. Do I have a motion? So moved. Moved by Ben.
Second.
Second by Herb. Any questions?
Appreciation for the, the foundation, congrats to the Leo six graders. That's a pretty substantial amount of money for six graders to raise, so, and their parents, I'm sure.
Where did they, where did they go? Oh, this is for next year?
This is for next year, right?
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Two, to approve the following child rearing leave request. Lindsay Fitch, Lancaster Elementary School teacher, October 19th, 2025 through May 4th, 2026.
So moved.
Moved by Evelyn.
Second.
Second by Ben. Any questions? None, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Three, to approve the paving and drainage project at White Mountain Regional High School in the amount not to exceed $193,000 with funds to come from the Districtwide Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund.
So moved.
Moved by Evelyn. Second by Ben. Any questions?
Do we, just some details on what?
Yep, so we, we've kind of discussed this in the past, but we're having a real bad problem in the front side of this building where water's pooling, and it's actually exceeding the lip of the building, and the windows are relatively new. And the caulking guy did a phenomenal job sealing the windows before they put them in place, but it's a matter of time before water starts penetrating this.
Right.
And LTC can tell you, if there's rain, the flags don't get put out because we have a swimming pool that takes multiple days to evaporate.
Okay.
And things are just getting really soft around the building. So part of this project is to put in proper drainage, put in some catch basins and take the water and send it down.
The mud.
Over the hill, yes.
And the paving.
We're gonna have to rip up half the paving to, to complete the objective, so.
Okay, all right.
And we've talked about it at building the grounds, in depth, and then we just.
Have to do it.
It's how water hasn't come in the building on this side, I have no idea. Like Rob said, the guy that put the windows in, because they go all the way down to the slab, is.
I didn't understand why you needed a rowboat just to get from here to the.
It happened to be raining during one of your facilities meetings, right?
Yeah, Evelyn would get stuck in the mud, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? Motion made seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Four, to approve the proposal for teacher of the visually impaired TBI contract with Boothby Therapy Services for school year 2025 to 2026 in the amount not to exceed $10237.50 with funds to come from the IDA, IDEA grant. Do I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Chris. Any questions?
I'm just gonna ask for Mr. Cronin's verification. I thought I saw him.
He is, he's back there.
Great. This, we, I think we talked about this last year as well, right, Mike? That this was, ended up being the most cost-effective and continuum-supporting provider of these services for the district, right?
Yes.
And in some cases, the only local provider as well, I agree.
Correct me if I'm wrong, went out to quote. We reviewed the quotes, determined that this provider met the needs that we have in the district. I need to be very careful so I don't, not disclosing further information. Meets the needs that exist in the district and can do it in a way that creates a continuum of success.
She's been very effective.
Good. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, just for transparency's sake, but I, I sort of recalled that from last year's approval as well.
Any other questions? Motion was made seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Five, to approve the proposal for physical therapy contract with Boothby Therapy Services for school year 2025 to 2026 in the amount not to exceed $25,680 with funds to come from the IDEA grant. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris.
I'll second it.
Second by Evelyn. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Six, to accept the quote from STS Education and approve the purchase of six promethium panels not to exceed the price of $15,402 with funds to come from the general budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Herb. Any questions?
I'm just curious, it doesn't really make a difference, but will that fall within this fiscal year or is that next, okay?
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Seven, to approve the following job descriptions for amendment and/or consolidation. Director of Buildings and Grounds amended. Maintenance, combination of facilities maintenance and grounds maintenance job descriptions. Custodian, combination of all previous custodian positions. CTE Director, Dean of Students, High School, combination of roles to amend the job description into one. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris.
I'll second it.
Second by Evelyn. Any questions? None, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Eight, to approve the following food service prices for school year 2025 through 2026 based on the USDA recommendations. Meal prices for school year 2025, 2026. Elementary lunch, $3.25. High school, $3.50. Student breakfast, $2.25. Adult breakfast, $2.50. An adult lunch, $4.25. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris.
Second.
Seconded by Herb.
How are we doing collecting the money for?
Well, we're still $20,000.
$20,000?
And these prices are the exact same as this year.
That was my question, so, so no change?
No changes for next year.
All right.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Nine, to accept the following retirement notification. Melody Stevens, White Mountain Regional School District, Food Service Director, effective June 30, 2026.
That's enough.
Can we vote now?
Well.
Seems somewhat cruel, but.
Her contract came across my email today and I was, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. And then I realized it's a year in advance.
It's a year in advance.
So we still have her for a year.
And, and we have a nice transition plan.
We have a plan.
Oh, good, good. Yeah, that was our next question.
I'm sorry, I missed, did somebody make the moment?
I'll move it with deep appreciation for her many years.
Chris, second.
I'll second it.
Right back.
Whoever, yeah.
Any other questions?
And we're sad.
We're sad, yeah.
But glad you have a transition plan.
All in favor?
Hesitant.
Any opposed?
I'm sure she'll be acknowledged, right?
Well, she'll pass unanimously. Action Agenda Item Number Ten, to approve the proposed 78 transition plan for the 2026, 2027 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Herb. Do I second?
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
Ben can have it.
Chris did it.
Chris. Any discussion?
I have, and, and Chris kind of got here, I won't say in the nick of time, but I'm concerned, I'm less concerned now, but I was more concerned when we were down three members and it was a bear, a bear forum.
Yeah.
I'm, I am a little concerned that we're, we're short two members with a decision like this.
I, I agree with the caveat that it's summer and it might be hard to get five of us at the table in July and August. So, but I, I hear you, and I, I had the same thought when Chris wasn't here.
Yeah.
So.
I'll take one at a time.
But, but I, I hear, I mean, ideally, we would all be around the table. I just.
I agree. I mean, that it would be nice if it was seven of us sitting here, but unfortunately, it's not. And I think at this point, we need to take a vote to see, so that the DLT at least gets to start if that's the way the vote goes, that they don't have to wait another month before we meet again.
Yeah, it's such a crossroads, roads, because they really need to get started if we're gonna do this. Time is of the essence to do it properly and to make the right plan and to, you know, hand it out and so people can see it. It's not gonna happen overnight, so they need the time. So it behooves us to prove it, but yet I am, yeah, I, I.
I, I think, no matter what the vote shows, there's work that the district leadership team needs to do because there's some very clear writing on the wall for us as a district, so, you know, I.
I think from a, exactly, and I think from a strategic, you know, us setting strategy and long, you know, like high-level goals, I think, we've talked about this so much over the years, and I, like, I feel like there's enough information in front of myself, just speaking for me, to make a decision, knowing that there's lots and lots of details that we, we don't know for sure. There, someone's thinking about them, we're all thinking about them. But those are kind of the tactics and the implementation that we know our administration is more than capable of, of rising to meet that challenge.
And, and those, that, those are where my reservations lie, is, is, I understand, you know, we had presentations tonight, we had presentations last meeting, or the, we were, did, you know, in public, the meeting before, whenever that was, which, which helped me. But I, I am still a little, I have some reservations and it, it revolves around that planning phase of it, and I understand why we're looking at it the way we're looking at it. But I, but I do have reservations.
And I'm very glad that we had some parents or community members speak out and give us their information and their opinion. And I hope that we can continue to connect them with us as we start this process, if it, if it gets approved. And if, you know, if it's, the, the dream is a separate building, so you want your taxes to go up like $8,000? You know, I mean, it's just pie in the sky. Unfortunately, I wish we could do that, but we can't. But we have to find a way to work together. We have to find a way to make the money that we have in the budget and not raise taxes and serve our students the best we can. That's where we are. That's the balancing point.
These are the kinds of decisions on the board that, like, it's tough because.
Very tough.
You, you can't make everybody happy, and, and you're gonna really make some people very unhappy. And e, e, either way, you know, it, it's tough. I, like I said, I think if we had an ideal, you know, a magic wand, we would do things differently, but we have what we have, so. But we have what we have, so...
And I would say too, you know, it is a thing that we've been discussing for quite a while and received excellent community input for through the AdHoc Committee that ran as well. I'm sorry that I didn't get to hear all of your input tonight. I had a work thing that ran over. But I am committed to listening to that input later this evening through the recording. I think what we have is a really committed, at least what we've seen through the Ed Programming Committee, and I'm sure you saw through the AdHoc Planning Committee, Evelyn, we have an incredibly committed group of leaders who are once again trying to figure out how to continue to lead as an innovative school district while also being mindful of that tax impact. And there's, there are many steps still to be taken over the course of the next year as we move ahead with this transition where there are opportunities for input and feedback. And I think it's incumbent on us as the strategy setters at the board level to exercise some trust in our leadership team who have given an immense amount of thought and work to get us to where we are tonight. And listen closely, I would say, whether you're here in this room or you're watching a recording or you're talking to your neighbors later on, if people in community have thoughts and they wanted to get to the board, reach out to us. We're always here to listen to the feedback of our constituency. Yes. And we'll work collaboratively moving forward. But from a strategy place, you know, that's kind of where I'm at tonight is that we, it's our duty to set the strategy. And then we have to trust that we've got the leaders in place at the district level to make sound decisions that adhere to, you know, best practices in education and are fiscally responsible as well, so...
I think I would just piggyback on the last words there, the fiscally responsible piece. I know that we've de-emphasized that in how we're approaching this right now and we're leading this plan with student outcomes. You know, what's best for the kids. When we were doing the surveys, the fiscal piece of it was emphasized a lot more. And I know how these things can go. I mean, you close a school and you think there'll be lots of savings and it doesn't always get realized in the way that you hope. I know that there's a lot of, you know, a lot of moving pieces here, but, I mean, I'll speak for myself and maybe for them a little bit, that, you know, we do really want to see some financial savings in this plan where it's possible. We understand that if this is approved, it's going to be, the first year will be front-loaded with some costs, you know, that are one-time expenditures. Building alterations, there's hiring things that have to be considered curriculum. We get that. We know that there's not going to be this immediate drop. But I hope that this puts us on a trajectory for some long, you know, longer, mid-to-long-term savings in our budget. So, I just want to say that. I know that that's not our primary goal right now, but I think it's important to keep that in mind, especially for our taxpayers who are not here tonight, but certainly have a say in this plan.
Yeah. I also think the communication and transparency around the planning that happens is really important. And that won't come as a surprise to you guys because we've talked about it at Ed Programming before. But, you know, I've heard commitment from our leadership team to communicate effectively with the community, to keep you apprised of what's happening as the plan moves forward. And I would just ask for a little bit of quid pro quo with the community as well. If you're hearing things that leave you unsettled, please don't circulate a rumor mill. Come to sources and ask for the clarification. Ask for the truth of what's happening and assume positive intent. Because we're working with a whole lot of administrators and teachers across the district who frankly, I mean, this is part of the reason I also don't personnel, I would pay three times as much as they're currently earning for the work that they do because they're so committed to our students and this idea of growing responsible citizens moving forward. So, you know, from everything I've heard in our many conversations about this, the intent is solid. It's to serve the kids at our communities well, to provide a high-quality education in the context of enormous challenges with state, federal, local funding. So, please, if you're hearing things that leave you feeling uncertain or unclear or anxious about decision-making, please, 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 please do some fact-checking. Come to the sources, whether it's board members or your building leadership team or people at the central office. Don't rely on rumor mills to inform what you're hearing about the school system.
All right. Sorry, I have one other thought and this is, you know, if we make this decision tonight, you know, these buildings in our district, they're very flexible. Our staff and our administration is flexible. We've reconfigured these buildings multiple times over many years to handle the shifting needs of the students in our district. I think it really, and I'm sure that as part of our planning process, if this moves ahead, will be to set some goals and targets and measurables that we can look at and say, okay, this transition, we're trying to accomplish this. In year one, year two, we're meeting these targets. You know, we really would love to have some benchmarks to see, okay, we've talked about what we hope to accomplish. How do we measure that and how do we ensure that it happens? If we reach a point where this isn't working, it's not set in stone. You know, I alluded to this earlier. There are some big unknowns right now. I mean, there's never been more uncertainty around education and many, many things in our, you know, economy and our country right now than there is right now. We don't know what's some of these things going on, being discussed right now at the state level, the national level, how that's going to impact us, our enrollment, our funding, right? We may reach a point in a year or two where we just say, we can't do it this way, we need to shift gears. So, I think it's important to say that, you know, we're flexible and we have, we're advocating at the state level, we're involved, we're trying to stay ahead of things. We're trying to react as quickly and as best we can to a very challenging, very uncertain time.
I think the process of planning this too has resulted in some awareness of the value of thinking ahead in some strategic planning in the context of declining enrollment. So, this is today's decision that's on our plate. But as we move through this planning process and think about some of those benchmarks, we can also be thinking about, what's the next kind of decision point that would result in further compaction of operations or the next opportunity for some realized savings along the way? Or the next opportunity for, you know, a more efficient way to get more kids involved in some of these learning opportunities? Because what we're looking at tonight is easily a 30-year trend in declining enrollment across the district. It's not, it's not a short-term thing that we're kind of knee-jerking to. And, you know, whether we're looking at census data or we're looking at other measures around the community, it's likely that enrollment will continue to decline over the long term. And we'll need to, you know, somebody, some board is going to come to the next decision point. And it would be kind of nice if through the planning process, we sort of identify, this is probably the next threshold we're going to need to be looking at down the road and thinking about. And I think some of the exercises that we've been through to get us to tonight's decision point have primed the pump for us to be able to do some of that predictive work.
So, just quickly off that is, Chris mentioned trust. And after hearing over these last few months about why we're doing this, and I have to trust in our administration and our leadership when they say that if we are going to have quality education for all of our students, this is something that we need to look. But piggybacking on what Herb said, I'm sure at some point during this year, they're going to come back and say, this is really odd. This is hard to try and figure out. But unless they come and say, we can't do this, it's not possible. In which case, we can say, we're not going to do it. We can change, you know, we can have a new vote. But at this point, I have to trust in our leadership. So, if there are any other comments? And the motion was made and seconded. All in favor? The motion carries unanimous. And again, thank you very much for coming and I hope you understand where we are at and we certainly understand where you're coming from. So, at this point, we have three more action agenda items which prior to that, I do need a motion to go into non-public session in accordance with RSA 91 dash A colon 3, Section 2, Paragraphes A, C, and K. Some moved. Moved by Ben, seconded by Evelyn. Before we take a roll call, we will have those action agenda items after we come out. It may take a little bit of time. You're more than welcome to stay and we could, if you had questions you wanted to ask individuals after we come back after the meeting. If not, again, thank you for coming. And Steph, if I could have a roll call, please.
Jayi Akerman. Eve Lynch, here. T. Giles. B. Jellison.
Yes.
R. Lee Como.
Yes.
H. Randall.
Yes.
K. Van Bergen, Utah.
Yes.
We're moving that indefinitely, right?
I'm sorry, seal the minutes indefinitely.
Yes.
Motion was made and seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? The motion is unanimous. We are now back in public session. So we will move on to action agenda, item number 11. To waive tuition and accept the enrollment of foreign exchange students for school year 25-26. Second by Evelyn, all in favor. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda, item number 12, to approve an early graduation request.
I'll second it.
Moved by Evelyn, seconded by Chris. Any comments?
Well done.
We're hard at it.
All in favor. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Make sure you keep up the grades.
Yeah, that's all our hard work is there.
And action agenda, item number 13, to approve the administrative contract for assistant superintendent for school operations for the year 25-26 and superintendent for the year 26-27.
So move.
Oh, second.
Fight you for it.
Moved by Evelyn, seconded by Ben.
My Robbie, Robbie, Bobby.
Any questions, comments? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All in favor.
I would just add, so it's in that, you know, as a district, we've been meeting and there's a transition plan to welcome Rob into being the superintendent on July 1st, 2026.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally have the press release.
I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Smart thing in there.
All in favor.